It is five o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And as this is a special meeting, we're just going to go on into public comments at this time. Ms. Connie, do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Okay. Next item is item three. Todd Schiller is our presenter. We're going to talk about professional employees dual term contract.
Good evening. Tonight, we are asking for a recommendation to rescind the proposed termination of the dual professional term contract of Patrick Henry that was applied at the August board meeting.
Todd, you have everything that you need on your end?
I do have everything I do. I do have everything I need, yes.
You couldn't hear him?
I can hear you. You did not. We can't hear him.
They couldn't hear on this end down here.
I do. I do have everything that I need.
I can hear you, but it didn't sound clear.
Got you.
It's a little muffled, I believe. Okay. So, this is something that we need to take action on. Is there a motion to? Okay, that's going to be Mr. Norwood. Is there a second? Mr. Taggart, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Todd.
I know we're a little bit ahead of time, ahead of schedule. We're going to be interviewing our search firm. There's a gentleman ten minutes out, but if you don't mind, if you want to go ahead and get started, you can just kind of delay all you want to. You can tell us about kids, grandkids. We love all of those topics.
What did you learn about delay? It's a secret.
I'm sorry, what was that?
What did you learn about delaying things? It's a secret.
I learned that timing is everything.
Timing is everything.
Well, Madam President, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Mike Moses. I'm the one that was supposed to be running late. I had a doctor's appointment in Dallas today, and David Thompson, who I work with and who is a principal with the law firm of Thompson and Horton, is, was coming. And somewhere between Round Rock and here, they had evidently a bad wreck, and they closed I-35, and he sat for about an hour. But he called me about ten minutes ago and said he was eleven minutes away, so I'm expecting that he'll walk in. And he said, "Now, you need to be there by 5:15." And I said, "I'll tell the doctor I have to leave and be here." But anyway, it's an honor to be here this evening. I've been in Belton many, many times. I have a son who is on the school board in Round Rock, and I'm not sure what he learned from me. But in any event, I'm very familiar with Belton. In fact, today I had lunch with a Belton High School graduate of 1963, Dr. Richard Baker, who played basketball for my friend Joe Pertle here, and I think was on the last team that won a state championship, he told me, in Belton. So, anyway, he has very fond memories of the community. There's David right there, and I'm going to let David come and take the microphone. Just as a way of introduction before he steps up, my name is Mike Moses. I'm a retired teacher, assistant principal, principal. I was superintendent in four districts in Texas, including one in East Texas, one in Galveston County, Lubbock, Texas. I was superintendent at Dallas ISD, and I was commissioner of education for five and a half years at one time. And I hope we didn't mess things up too much then, Robin. But in any event, I've been privileged to work with David. And when I left the commissionership, David and I started doing superintendent searches. And I don't know exactly how many we've done, but we've been honored to work with a lot of really, really outstanding districts. I think you have a copy of our proposal, and there are the districts that are listed in there, districts we've worked with some multiple times, and been very blessed to do that. David, I've already told them that I got here by 5:15, and you got closed. So, you want to introduce yourself and tell them a little bit about?
Sure. What all of you?
Before you all continue, is there? Hey, Elizabeth, it's really difficult to hear. I'm sorry. Can we work on the mic? We're struggling.
Turn off the mic if you're not pleased. Turn it off.
Well, good evening, and it's good to be with you tonight. Thank you for the invitation to come and visit, spend a little bit of time with you. And if we get an opportunity to work with you, we will very much be honored and privileged to do that. I'm David Thompson. I'm an attorney in private practice, our law firm, Thompson and Horton. We have offices, primary offices, in Houston, Austin, and Dallas. Our primary practice is representing school districts, colleges, community colleges. Some work for cities and counties, but mostly educational. That's our focus. I think Dr. Moses has already told you, he and I, Mike, I think we met when we were both young and skinny, and we've been personal friends, frankly, for many, many decades. And we had an opportunity, when he left the commissioner's office, to start assisting a few boards a year with searches. You have a copy of our proposal, and at the back of the proposal is a representative sample of some of the districts that we have worked with over the years. Our focus has been districts with over 10,000 students. You will note, we've worked with a few boards smaller than that, but that's sort of been our focus over the years. Texas has 1,021 districts. We have, what, 5.3 to 5.4 million kids? And something like half of the kids are in the 50 or 60 largest districts. And 10,000 is, has kind of been a cut point. Mike and I think leadership matters, and so we've tried to focus and help districts. And you can see the individuals who took those jobs and get a sense of the terms that they were able to serve. We only work with about four to six boards a year at most. This isn't something that we try to mass produce or do on a large scale. We work very selectively. We will only work with one or two districts at a time, and that's so that we can really focus on the needs of that community. And currently, just full disclosure, we're not working with any district right now. We just finished assisting the Leander Board with their search. We've had, Mike, two or three other districts talk to us that may be looking at searches, probably after the first of the year or around the first of the year, but we're not currently assisting any other boards. I know time is important. I'm a lawyer. I can filibuster. I can keep talking. That's probably not what we need to do tonight. You have our proposal. And Mike, why don't you come up here and let's respond to questions? We do have a timeline. We might want to give you a little sense of, this is a representative timeline. It's just to give you a sense of what the flow of a search would look like.
Yeah. Again, as David said, we'll be brief. You have our proposal. David and I are the two principals. If you won't see other people, if any, if you work with us, the only people you'll see are David and I. We don't send other people. There's nobody else to send. We're the team, and we work with the districts. We do the advertising. We do the recruiting. We work with you to work and have focus groups in your community if you want that, and we speak to that here in the timeline. We work with you to help identify candidates for interviews. We also have a battery of about 100 questions that focus on seven or eight areas that we also help prepare you for interviews, furnish you questions, get you kind of ready, go through the protocols of those kinds of things. We set up the interviews, both a first round and a second round usually. We'll coordinate site visits. If you want to visit the site of your, the candidate that you zeroed in on, we'll coordinate a site visit if you would like that. We help vet. We do vet. We do background checks. We'll help with criminal background checks, financial background checks. But we've never had a search that's failed because we didn't properly vet a candidate. And so, we want to make sure that that's done well because it's reflection on you, but it's reflection on us, too. And we don't, we take that seriously. We'll help. And David, being an attorney, will assist with contract if that's of interest to you. Obviously, you have an attorney that can do that as well, but we assist in that. And also, in our proposal, there's a, I think there's a guarantee in there, too. If something were to happen, if you did a search with us and an individual left after one year, we would come back and conduct another search at no charge, and I think after a couple of years, do it at half price. We had never had that happen. We've been blessed. We've been lucky that most of the fits, the fits have been good fits, and they've lasted. What I did prepare for each of you, David and I put together a timeline, just to give you a look at kind of how this might proceed. And I did a couple of options. One's an, what I would call kind of aggressive, because it leaves the position open after advertising. If you started like in the next few days, leaves it open for about 30 days, and then you have to start rolling. And you say, "Well, if you want someone here by February 1st," and I think that's option one. If you go to the second page and look at February 3rd, I think that's the first Monday in February, and you back up and say, "Well, in order for someone to be here, they probably have to have the 30 days to move, month of January." That means around the end of December, you would be approving an employment contract. You can't by law approve an employment contract until you've given 21 days' notice of who that individual's going to be, so you have to back that up to December the 2nd. Say, "Okay, I'll back that up to December 2nd." You've got the week of Thanksgiving that's in there, which probably won't get a lot of business conducted. So then you back up to the week of November 22nd through the 27th, and you can see we've got some time in there for background checks, site visits, and so forth. Your first and second round of interviews there in mid-November, meaning that your search consultants would need to meet with you about a week ahead of that, which goes back to the first page down at the bottom there, November 4th or 5th, meaning that you've got a deadline for applications of about November 1st. Well, today is September 23rd, so you get the idea that's, it can be done, that that's an aggressive calendar. The next calendar is option two, and that one builds in a start time, I think, of right after spring break. I'm going to say March 16th, which I think that may be the right before, right after your spring break. In any event, you can kind of see the same thing prevails, the same type of calendar prevails. The difference here is you get a window of leaving the position open for about 60 days. Now, Robin has said she'd be wanting to do this for another year or two, so you probably don't have to be in a rush. But kidding, of course. Appreciate her service and appreciate what she's doing and has done in service to Central Texas students. But in any event, it gives you just kind of a look, see, of what a timeline might feel like. I've mentioned some things in there, too, about advertising, whether you want statewide advertising or whether you want national advertising. Most of our districts, we do Texas advertising on TexasISD.com, on the Texas Association of School Administrators. A few like to advertise in Education Week and with the National Association or with the American Association of School Administrators. That's usually about $1,500 or so. It's not terrible, but it's, the truth of it is, most superintendents who want to work in Texas, if they happen to be out of state, follow TexasISD.com and follow the Texas Association of School Administrators. And so, it's your call, absolutely, whether you want to do that or not, but we haven't found it to be necessary to get out-of-state candidates. Really do a pretty good job of keeping up with openings in Texas if they want to get back, if they've left Texas and seen the error of their ways, they want to get back as fast as they can. And if they're wanting to come to Texas, then they're usually following those sites. That's a kind of a quick rundown of our proposal, districts, kind of how we work. David, I leave anything?
Let me make a couple of comments.
And we want to say this right up front. Calendars are very important because they will provide a structure to your overall search, and it will help you as a board kind of think a couple of months ahead and get time located on your calendars. But we will, you will hear us say this throughout the search. Your calendar is a tool, not a master. So if you get to points in the search where you need to take more time, modify it, that's always something that is an option if you need it. But we do think locking in dates is going to be very important so that the entire board can participate to the fullest through the process. If we were asked to work with you, one of the first things we would do is come back at an initial meeting, get a calendar established, and spend a little bit of time talking to the board and getting a sense of your priorities and what you think the particular needs or strengths are that you're looking for in candidates. A second thing I'd like to say, Mike, is we do not have a stable or a slate of candidates that you will see. This is not a friends-and-family undertaking. Our engagement is with the board. Our client is the board, not the individual candidates. And we will always approach it that way. You will see the names of every single person who expresses an interest in the job or establishes a candidacy. You won't get just a slate at the end of our presorted half a dozen top candidates. Mike and I, when we started doing searches, I think that was the more common practice. Frankly, from a trust standpoint, we want to make sure the board gets the fullest picture possible of the individuals who are interested in your job. We are also very open. Any person can express an interest. We've had non-traditional candidates. That's a little bit of an exception in Texas, but it has happened. And we are also completely open whether the candidates are external or internal. And we will talk about that during the process so that you structure it to avoid any unintended consequences. But we have worked with many districts that have, after going through the process, have decided, fresh eyes, somebody from outside the district is the right person. And we've worked with many districts who have decided that an internal candidate is the best fit. So, our sole goal is to help the board get to the point where you're prepared to make the best possible decision for your district and to look at the fullest possible group of candidates. And so, that's the way we approach it.
Absolutely. So, thank you for that. Thank both of you for that information. I have a couple of questions, and then the rest of the board may have some questions. Under your extensive search and recruitment and your proposal, you state that the consultants would only contact individuals who are serving successfully in their current assignments. Can you expound on that?
I don't see.
Does that mean no one else can? You're not looking at anybody else? Or what does that mean?
That means we don't contact people who are trying to get away from their district because they're in trouble with their board. What that means is...
And they may apply.
They can apply, but we recruit people who have a proven track record. I would not want to present anyone, David and I would not want to present anyone to you who was having difficulty in their current assignment. And if we did, we would tell you about it. As David said, we work for the board. We don't work for the candidates. But I think that statement is just a statement to assure the board and our clients that we work for them and that we will be recruiting outstanding leaders, outstanding school executives, again, who have served successfully. Someone who has had difficulty can certainly apply, but we have an obligation to tell you if we have knowledge of that difficulty and whether it should affect your decision-making in choosing a new leader.
Okay. I guess my question stems from the fact that if there's someone out there who's transitioning to the area for whatever reason, and they have served successfully in their position, but maybe they're transitioning, is that still going to be available for them to apply?
Sure.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. And where will they apply?
Well, if we're selected, then we'll, there'll be a, on the website, on TexasISD.com, T-A-S-A, we'll have a place for them to apply. And usually, all of our, all materials are usually sent to David's office in Houston, Texas, but we furnish our, furnish our email addresses, phone numbers, so they can get in touch with us. And many do, and many know how to do it. But David's usually the repository for all the materials that come, and then those are organized for presentation to the board.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Going to your community engagement information? I'm sorry. I'll get there. Okay. So, it talks about that each trustee will nominate eight or nine individuals from various walks of the community. Can you expound a little bit more on that?
You want to, you'll be too.
You go ahead.
What we have found, Madam President, is we usually like for each board member to nominate about nine people. We like, and we give you the categories. We ask for a parent. We ask for a non-parent taxpayer. 70% of Texans do not have school, adult Texans do not have school-aged kids, so it's important to hear from that audience. We ask for a businessperson. We ask usually for an auxiliary employee, for a teacher, for an administrator.
Outside of central office.
Outside of central office. But we give you a list of, that usually about nine areas that we'd like to see you each nominate a stakeholder from. We get 63 people, and then we work with someone in the superintendent's office or your appropriate office to break those into groups of about 20, 15 to 20. And David and I come back and spend a day and meet with those groups. And it's a pretty rich conversation. And we ask that they be kind of mixed up, so it's not all teachers in one group and all parents in one group. We like the, we like the teachers hear what the parents have to say, and the parents hear what the teachers have to say, or the principals, or the business community, or pastors, or auxiliary employees, so that everybody has a feeling of what the needs are and what people are thinking about the schools and the children that it serves. But we work, we work with you to get a pretty robust group of people together. We like to give them about three or four weeks' notice, and where the timeline is concerned, that begins to be kind of critical because it becomes incumbent upon all of you to get the names submitted to a central spot here in the building and then get invitations out. David and I don't know the people, obviously, so the invitations usually come from the board or the board president. But we help set all that up, and we provide the letters of invitation, and we'll work with someone on your staff to kind of help make sure that happens. But it's usually a pretty productive day, and most boards have told us it really helps community buy-in as well as community participation in what's happening with regard to the search. So, does that help a little bit?
It does. I have another comment, but go ahead.
And I just want to add to that. As Mike said, we have found over the years this to be a very good way to generate input from your community, from a very diverse group. And we take down all of the comments that are made. You will see every single comment that is made without attribution during the course of these structured conversations. But what we're really doing is going through and trying to identify three, four, five, if there are themes that seem to recur over and over during the course of the day. That's what we really want to tease out because that will be important to the board as you did try to look at candidates. We will also work with your administration to do an online survey to give other people in the community who have not had an opportunity to be on those intense focus groups, an opportunity to submit comments. It used to be fairly common for boards to do what we call open mic night, where you would have a meeting. You might have a microphone. Anybody in town who wanted to come and say a few words could do that. Frankly, we've found over the years, participation in those is fairly limited because of people's schedules and other concerns, and you get a lot more input by using an online survey. But we'll work with the board, we always do, to kind of tailor how to get community input. And you're doing it for a variety of reasons. One reason you're doing it, simply to give your community an opportunity to have their say, which is always important, and your new superintendent is going to need to know that the community had had some appropriate input, even though it's ultimately a board decision, not anybody else's decision. But we also try to use this process to tease out, again, those three or four priorities that can be helpful to the board as you then start thinking about actual candidates.
Thank you. We typically have had community-focused groups in this area that have worked out very well. We, as a board, have always been invited to just kind of sit in the background and listen. But I noticed you all, I see you shaking your head. I see that in your proposal, that you all suggest that the board not attend any of those focused group meetings.
Our goal is to get the fullest. We want people to be absolute. We don't let press come. We ask board members not to come. We want people to have an absolute unfettered opportunity to say what they need to say without attribution so that it can be passed on via...
This is Belton. People express themselves regardless of who's there.
Yep.
So, I understand. I just wanted some clarification on that. I'll pause for a moment, and any other board member have questions? Okay.
When we were looking at the schedule options, did you, do you all have a recommended option? Right? I mean, two options in front of us. Was there one that you thought was going to work better?
Really, we don't. We thought, you know, David and I looked to just see, how soon do you want to get someone in place? If February 1st is first, is really critical to you, then obviously, there's your, there's an option. But if you're comfortable and you can twist Robin's arm long enough to go through spring break, it's a little more comfortable, probably, to let that. I'm trying, I think what we were trying to do, too, is avoid Thanksgiving schedules, holiday schedules for interviews and kind of build in some time there. But the schedule that probably lands in, lands someone here by March, the key is you've got to allow them about 30 days to get out of their current. If you hire outside of your district, if you hire externally, you've got to leave somebody about 30 days, and then you've got the 21-day period that's required by law. So, there's 51 days of time right there that, as a calendar's running. So, I don't know if I'm helping you...
No, I hear you.
Yeah. But for comfort purposes, I think the board might be happy with the March schedule, but if you have a need, you feel like we really need to get this done and move it along, we've got a calendar in there that would do that.
Okay. So, how will you help us find our person? Right? So, whittling down the candidate pool, right, to, you know, the top six or eight or 10, you know, how will you, just kind of talk through that process and how we're going to do that?
Well, first of all, David and I have been very blessed to enjoy a nice network of professionals in Texas, of school executives, because of his work as a school attorney in some of the really outstanding districts in Texas, and because I guess I went to West Texas, the Gulf Coast, and went to, I've been in Houston and been in Austin, lived in all these different places. We've just been fortunate to have, I think, a really nice group of school people. But it's a recruiting effort that we make. We send out usually according to the timeline you'll see there. We usually, if we're hired, we've got about 100 people of trusted professionals, college professors, association executives, school board members, other school leaders. Sitting superintendents. We invite to nominate people for this position. Belton is not unknown. This is an area, obviously, I've driven I-35 for so many years and just watched with amazement what's happened on this corridor. But this is, this is a district with a good reputation. I looked at your test scores. I looked at your reports, and it stands up well. It's a very desirable place, desirable community. So, that's a, that makes our job pretty easy to present, "Hey, I've got an opportunity I'd really like for you to talk about." And I'd like to go back to trustee Jordan's question. You know, we're trying to recruit people who are doing a great job where they are. Anybody can apply, obviously, but you're not trying to get someone who's trying to get away from where they are. You really want someone who's, you're almost having to say, "Hey, you're doing a great job, but we've got an opportunity here that you ought to look at." But in any event, we've developed over the years just the network that allows us to reach out to a lot of people and talk with a lot of people about, number one, who are the experienced people that can do a job like this? Who are the people who are in the, who are mid-career that this would be a good opportunity? And three, who are the rising stars that someone ought to keep an eye on because they might be ready to come and offer themselves and take an opportunity like this and run with it for a long time? So, we like to kind of be abreast of who those people are, and fortunately, we've been able to do that.
Frank, can I make a comment?
We don't use an application form. This is an executive position. We get the candidates to submit. We use more of a portfolio approach. The candidates will submit very thorough, detailed current resumes. They will submit writing samples because we think it's important for the board to see how people actually communicate in writing. They will submit other materials that indicate accomplishments in their career, so you'll have a portfolio on each campus. There's a stage in the process where we'll have an extended meeting that'll last typically three to four hours. You will see every individual that expresses an interest in the position. You will see every individual that expresses an interest in the position. And then we kind of have a guided process. Mike and I are never going to tell you who to hire or who to interview, but we have a process where we will work through all of those applications to kind of do a two- or three-step narrowing to get down to an initial group that you decide you want to bring in for interviews. We're not going to just throw them on the table and say, well, good luck, hope you find, uh, the right one. We work with you through that process. And if you talk to boards that we've worked with, uh, uh, we think they like it. We think it feels like it gives the board some ownership of the individuals that you're choosing to interview.
Okay. Yeah, I think, but I think you actually got, hit that question and then answered probably my next two, so I, I think I'm good.
The site visits. We've heard, honestly, we've heard good, we've heard bad. We've had one group say, you need to do them. We've heard another group say, it puts your board in, or it puts the person you're interviewing into a really weird situation. Can you give me y'all's opinion on that?
The internet has changed the way site, the, a lot of people look at site visits now. It's just kind of, um, well, we'll go and do it, but it's, we've already learned everything we're going to learn about the candidate because of the reference checks, background checks. We provide, uh, the board, usually cell telephone numbers of the school board president, a couple of board members, chamber of commerce president, maybe a teacher, a principal, mayor, uh, community leaders, as well as some of the school, um, stakeholders. And usually that, that's, that's really what people want to do. If a site visit, if someone thinks a site visit will really help us get a feel, we'll set that up, but more, very, very few districts are doing that. I think, I can think of one that we've assisted in the last, oh, couple of years that have, has done a site visit, and, uh, um, that, that was kind of where the, there were some board members wanting to, some that, you know, already had seen enough information and seen all they wanted to see. Um, again, that's a board call. We set it up if you think it would help, but, uh, I would have to say, most districts and most boards have moved away from it. But it, 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 it can serve a purpose. If, and it does, the candidates don't mind as long as they know they're usually going. They're, the board is considering naming them the finalists for the position. You're not going to get two or three people that you're thinking about, say, yeah, I'll do a site visit, yeah, I'll do a site visit, yeah, I'll do a site visit, and then disturb their community, disturb their board, and then put their circumstance at risk. We, we would, we would encourage you never to do that. If you're sure this is who we think we want to name finalists, but we want to take one more visit to be sure and have a, and see them in their setting, then they'll, and, and what we do is we don't let them really be the host of the visit. We get a third party to be the host of a visit that basically, uh, make sure the, the, the board members, which can't be a quorum, have to, get to see, uh, some of the leadership in the community and talk to the leadership about the, the superintendent. So, we coordinate that in a way where they're not really the, the point person for the visit.
So, if I'm hearing it correctly, uh, once you've gotten to that point, because you are going to, even if it's not a site visit, you're going to call and talk to the board president, you're going to talk to different people, you're at the very end of the road because once you make those phone calls, you've already laid down the foundation of, we're coming, you know, this person's said they want to come here, they're leaving your district. If it goes south at that point, everybody's in a bad situation.
It is, and, and we tell, we tell the candidates that, um, they need to be talking to their board members. Um, there's one other thing I, I'd say that David and I do, and I, I think, not that we're, uh, the sharpest guys around, but we've learned a lot. I'll say that. It's not good to have a site visit or even get close to that until you've already had some discussions with the candidate about contract salary. What you don't want to do is you don't want to go do a site visit and then find out, we can't come to terms with this person. We can't, uh, they want a, a five-year contract, we're only going to do a three, or they want a four-year contract, we only want to do a two. Uh, they're, they're not going to, and, or the money is, is a problem. Uh, you want to get all that, you can't enter into a contract, obviously, but you want to know that there is a basic agreement about what, what a, a contract might look like. So before we do a site visit, we, none of us get embarrassed. We don't want to back out. We don't want the candidate to back out. We want to make sure that before we go and, and do this, that we're pretty sure about what we're going to find. Again, David and I have never, uh, over the last however many years, Dave, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years, we've never had anybody that, uh, was found out to be inappropriate, that the board said, King's Ex, we don't want to hire them. It's, we've, everyone has gone to closure.
Can I add one comment? Your pool, think down the road, your pool is likely to be superintendents of slightly smaller districts for whom this is a appropriate career move and advancement. And many of those individuals, Mike and I will always look two or three steps back in their career. They may have worked in larger districts, but, but to begin a superintendency, move to a smaller district. You're also going to get deputies in larger districts who want to take that step into the superintendency. Frankly, site visits are less disruptive if I'm a deputy. Frankly, it's kind of, it may be professionally flattering that I'm being considered. If I'm a sitting superintendent somewhere, you don't want to disrupt another community, another board, another relationship. So, uh, that's something to factor in when you get to that point as to who are the people we're talking about. The goal at the end of the day is treat people the way you would want to be treated, treat people professionally, uh, and, and, and don't be disruptive to another community, another district, another board.
I was looking at your proposal. Um, in terms of the fee schedule, I guess your fee's not due until the process is complete, right?
Right. Yes, sir. We don't ever invoice until everything is over. We'd rather you be happy and everybody feel good about it. Uh, but we don't nickel and dime you during the search. We don't send you and ask you for advances. We don't ask for anything. We just do the work, and, uh, we work for a good outcome at the end. And then, uh, again, we've been fortunate that at the end, uh, board is happy and candidate's happy, and then we're able to, uh, close the search, and then we send you an invoice.
And can I add one, one thing to that? That's not only the case for our fee, but our firm, we, um, it, it's customary and appropriate to reimburse candidates for their expenses if they have to travel to come. We actually handle that reimbursement, and then when you get the final bill, it will be our fee and expenses, and then it will also be any candidate expenses that were brought in. You'll never actually clear through your business office a receipt with a person's name on it. And, and so we try to set these processes up so that they're as confidential as possible. Uh, we're not secretive for the sake of being secretive. We're secretive to the extent that it's appropriate to give the board an opportunity to see the best candidates. But that all comes right at the end.
Okay, thank you. And looking at the proposal, um, it appears that you work with school districts that had as few as five thousand students at Curville and a hundred thousand at Cypress Fairbanks. What is it about Belton that you know now that would make your firm a good fit for us?
As you can tell from the, uh, proposal, we've worked with a lot of growing districts. Um, Northside San Antonio, Cy Fair, Keller, um, Garland, Allen, several, these are all growing districts. You're a growing school district. You've been a growing school district. Um, we also think we've been, David has enjoyed a stellar reputation across Texas in the area of school finance, uh, and has constantly sought to talk with people about school finance. I've had a little experience with the T E A and with the accountability system, uh, in our state, so I think that makes us kind of unique. We think we're, we may be the only firm of an attorney and a superintendent. I don't know. A few others may have come along and decided to do what we've been doing, but we think that makes us a good fit for your district. And as David said, we don't, we get asked to do these for districts that we respectfully just decide we're probably not a good fit or it doesn't work for us. Uh, but, uh, I've watched, uh, the Temple-Belton area for a long time, and I've been in, um, when I was commissioner, I visited this district. I have been in the Temple District, and as I say, I have a, a son that's on the board in Round Rock. So this is, and we've done Hayes, Georgetown, Leander, and other districts in the area, so Lake Travis. So, we, we think we're pretty familiar with this part of Texas and with districts here, and, uh, we think we could, um, could serve well.
With, with regard to the focus groups, would you be amenable to doing it on more than one day and maybe change the times? Because obviously there's people that maybe we'd want to participate that because of their work schedule could not come before three-thirty in the afternoon.
Well, one of the things that we do, and I'll let David do this, the, the fee's negotiable. If you want to add some days to our service, we can do that. What I would suggest is maybe us, uh, think about maybe an evening, uh, trying to work out, do something after hours, if that would be of help to get some people that you're talking about in to be able to talk. And yes, we would be amenable to that, uh, of kind of working out a, uh, a schedule that would allow for some people to come after hours, after work, something like that, uh, if that would be helpful.
And if I heard you correctly, you're not working with any district at this time?
That's correct.
Not at this moment.
We've, we've been approached by a couple, but we generally, and here's what we will not do. If we were to take your search, we wouldn't take another search of another district of your size. We have worked with districts of, say, forty or fifty thousand while we were doing a search for a district of ten or fifteen thousand because you're not drawing from the same pool. Um, if you, we will not, we won't compete, uh, against ourselves or, or you against another district. If we're representing you, we won't, we won't do a search in a comparable-sized district.
In two thousand and eighteen, you did the search for Plainview and for Alden, according to the proposal. And you listed the superintendents that retired or went on to other districts. You didn't say anything about the two superintendents in two thousand and eighteen. Are they still currently serving?
I'm sorry, the districts in Alden and Plainview?
They are both currently serving.
Yes, they are. Sorry. We just overlooked that, but yes, they are still there.
Yeah. H.T. Sanchez is still in Plainview and, um, and Latonya is still, and, and doing very, both of them are doing very well in their community.
Would you agree that the vast majority of the superintendents that you put in place, most of them retired, they didn't move on to other districts?
Yeah.
Percentage-wise?
If, if you look typically at the type of district we work with, a lot of those are larger districts that do tend to be, uh, more destinations. And so we've had relatively few, again, if you look at our representative sample, of superintendents who have left those districts to move to other districts. You're right. These have, for the most part, been very stable, um, relationships that have lasted until someone was ready to retire. There are few occasions where people have moved, and we've tried to make note of those.
Right, and that leads into the next question is, how do you view Belton? Is it a, is it one of those districts or is it something else?
I would say this district is a district where someone, you know, a superintendent, let me ask you a question this way. Superintendents generally do not move professionally, or, or professional growth comes when you get a larger district. This is a district you can come to and grow with the district. The district's growing, so you get to grow with the district. So the idea of seeking a larger job is probably not as attractive and appealing. Um, I think the circumstances in, in that, in the superintendency has changed probably over the last twenty years, where bigger is not always better. Uh, stable is better. Um, is there community support? Is there board support? Um, because the accountability system does create certain pressures, uh, that school leaders want to make sure that people are engaged and supportive. I see this as a pretty supportive community, a pretty engaged community. Now, I, I picked Richard Baker's brain today a little bit, one of your, your former graduates, and, uh, he, as I said, he has, is very, speaks very fondly of, uh, of the community. But I would see this as a, a district you could consider a destination district because it's a district you can come, and if you're seeking a, a district with larger enrollment, you're going to get larger just staying here, it appears to me. I don't know the growth this year, Robin, but it appears that it's continuing, uh, the number of students continuing to increase. So, um, it's a desirable job, a desirable district, a desirable community.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mike, we're growing about three to four percent a year.
Okay. See, that's pretty good.
Good growth.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And that's exceeding, that's above the state average. That's.
So just a, a quick follow-up to that. Um, what is your, your all stance on, you know, hypothetically, you place a superintendent with us? You know, what is your policy on working with that specific superintendent again and, and in a specific time period to find them another role?
Five years, I think we've said. We won't.
Three to five.
We won't.
We're definitely not.
We haven't, we haven't taken anybody away that I'm, and we don't, and first of all, we don't steal anybody. Uh, but we're, um, I don't, I don't know of anyone that, it, I want to say maybe after five years, we might tell them there's an opportunity, but I don't think I've talked to anybody. Um, and if, if we do, it's not a formal recruiting. It's, it's, you know, they might, now, I've had, I've had people call me and say, hey, I, I see you're doing this job. And I'll say, you know, um, we were, we were really glad to get to work with you and the board three years ago. So we're not going to recruit you for this job. Now, obviously, if you're interested in it, it's, it's an open, it's an open setting. But no, we're not going to try to come, help you get a new superintendent and then come in here in two years and try to steal them away from you. No, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
Once the finalist is named, uh, how do y'all handle the media on that?
I had David.
We'll, we'll work with the district, uh, with, with the board, board president, with your communication staff, um, to, to be ready with, um, um, an appropriate press release, a statement about, uh, where the individual's from, what their background, some appropriate quotes. Um, we try to, we encourage the individual to actually be in the district very promptly after being named as finalist. You know, part of the point of that twenty-one day period is for due diligence. Uh, it's, it's kind of, I describe it as it's the, it's the period between the announcement of the engagement and the wedding. That's, I mean, we've, we've had an announcement. We've not yet entered into the actual formal relationship. But we would encourage the individual to be in the district during that period of time, uh, meet with your media, meet with your community, um, obviously spend time with the board. Um, but, but yeah, we'll work with you to, to have appropriate, uh, press releases or other communications ready to go when you, um, announce the finalist. And, and as Mike's already said, we really will also work with you before you announce the finalist to at least have some informal understandings about expectations for a contract. Uh, we think it is not always helpful to make that announcement and then start the negotiation over how big the ring's going to be, to use my earlier announcement. It's good to have so, I mean, earlier analogy. So, uh, yeah, we're, we're available till you close the process.
The, the, as David said, we make sure that when you're ready, that the, that it's, it's conveyed in a, in the appropriate way to the community. But we usually like to see the board or the chamber of commerce or the PTA or someone host a reception during the twenty-one day period for the candidate, um, and family, uh, and come to the community, and, uh, you know, it's a way to, to greet, meet. And, uh, and usually during that twenty-one day period, most districts find that has a, uh, that's a, a good thing to do, just to kind of introduce the candidate to everybody and, uh, kind of have them spend some time in the community, and also maybe spend some individual time with trustees.
And follow-up to Chris's question, um, do you have a formal engagement services agreement?
We do. We, if, anytime we are hired, you'll get an engagement letter from our firm laying out, uh, the terms of our engagement.
Is there anything in there about what Chris's issue was about recruiting someone that's in place? Is there a time period in your engagement letter?
Um, we do not put that in the engagement letter, uh, and, and here's what I want to be clear about. Mike was trying to make a subtle distinction. There is a distinction between us actively recruiting somebody, showing up, grabbing them by the sleeve and saying, it's time, you need to move. We do not do that under any circumstances, period. But these are public employment jobs, and people have an opportunity to apply. Um, and, and if people choose to apply, that's, uh, uh, they're legally entitled to do that. And so, we're never going to make any representations that, that, uh, we'll try to inhibit that in any, in any form, shape, or fashion. That, that would not be appropriate.
You wouldn't be proactive. You just wouldn't.
Yeah, but if individuals, uh, want to, want to raise their hand and say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to look at something, I want to be considered, uh, they're entitled to do that.
Understood.
Yep.
Understood.
Yep.
I don't think we've ever, I, to my knowledge, David and I, I don't think we would have been asked back to some of these districts multiple times, but, but I don't think we've ever been, I know we've never been accused of doing that, and we will not do that, we just don't, you know, we, we, we want, as David said, we want to treat people the way we want to be treated, and we want to treat you the way we would want to be treated, and that's not to come and ha, help you, and then turn around and try to steal from you, that's just not what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you for all of that, I think I have one final question for you, uh, in your proposal, it states that national organizations will be contacted if desired by the board, so, uh, that being the case, if we decide we just want to look, want you all to look here in the state of Texas, and only accept applications from folks here in the state of Texas, on your advertising fees, you've got a national search and an amount there, is that on top of what you're proposing, or in addition to?
That would be under expenses, that would be advertising expenses, I, the fee is, I think, included in there along with expenses, and usually we find those expenses, as I said, are, for the national advertising, it's about fifteen hundred dollars, and, and I, as I said, I don't think you necessarily need to do that, we just, we just put it, pointed out that if you want to, and, and if you say, well, we want, we want to go ahead and do that, then it's part of the expenses on the search, but it's, um, some, some boards and some districts just like to say, we've, we have put that out nationally, uh, but again, most of the people who, uh, are interested in Texas find, know those two websites, uh, it's not, it's not an expense to you, and it's not part of our fee.
Thank you. I believe that was all of our questions, is there anything else you all would like to share with us before we go into closed session?
Have a, we appreciate having a chance to visit with you tonight.
It's nice to be in your district, uh, we, we appreciate and applaud the work you do, having had the opportunity to work with a lot of school board members, and David has as well, we know that it's a, uh, sometimes thankless job, and I appreciate what you do, and appreciate the work that goes on in this district on behalf of boys and girls, and, uh, we wish you a lot of success, if you, if we're honored to be selected, then we'd love to work with you, and if we're not, we'll still pull for you, and be glad to help you in any way we can.
Well, we appreciate you all making the journey to come and talk with us, and answer all of our good questions.
Do you want us to wait, or are we, are we good?
Um, you all, either way, you all are welcome to stay, we're going to go and deliberate over a couple of things, so, whatever your preference is.
We're happy to do either.
Okay. So, at this time, it is five fifty-two, the board will go into closed session to discuss personnel, Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one, point zero seven four, be back as soon as possible. Six eleven, and we will reconvene in open session, uh, the next item on our agenda is to consider, to discuss, and take appropriate action regarding selection of superintendent search firm, is there a motion to, um, hire Thompson and Horton Search Firm, got a, a motion by Mr. Taggart, is there a second? Mr. Flor, all in a favor, please raise your hand, that passes unanimously, the board will hire Thompson and Horton Search Firm to help us find our next superintendent. And at, at this point, with no further business, we stand adjourned.